Mr. Watchroom.
Roll call.
Toth.
Here.
Obendorf.
Here.
Echol.
Here.
Tinney.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes for the September 23, 2024 regular council meeting? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from September 23, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the October 14, 2024 regular council meeting?
I need to add facilities minutes to committee reports.
Okay.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, committee reports, public safety.
Safety committee meeting, September 16, 2024, 5:00 p.m., 133 Osborne, Rossford, Ohio, 43460. Safety committee met on September 16 at 5:00 p.m. in council chambers. In attendance were Chief Kitzler, Acting Chief Vasek, and council members Obendorf, Owen, and Toth. Acting Chief Vasek gave his monthly reports for months of July and August. The number of shifts covered by the fire department personnel has increased as uncovered shifts have dropped. Also, mutual aid received has dropped by 76% since the beginning of the year. Mutual aid given has increased during that time as well. Acting Chief Vasek also gave updates on getting the civil service test set up, future need for equipment, and updated paging system. Chief Kitzler gave his report with items discussed being year-to-date service calls, detective activity, details about Mad Cat, flock camera update, a promotional exam, and the hiring of an additional officer. Chief Kitzler also handed out information on the possibility of purchasing three more Avola's speed signs. Meeting adjourned to 5:35 p.m.
Okay, any comments or questions on safety? Okay, facilities.
All right, the Facilities Parks and Marina Committee met on Wednesday, September 25 at 4:00 p.m. In attendance were Allison Murray, Tyler Cold, Todd Kitzler, Rachel Tinney, Bob Toth, and Brenna Reynolds. The update on Veterans Park and Marina, the three solar lights have been installed by the swing benches. A path along the water is being proposed for a 2025 project, and there will be covered seating by the play structures. The downtown Pocket Park courtyard, further discussion on the Pocket Park funds indicated that the Tarda Light Funds are intended to attract ridership in municipalities and are not to be used on bus stops themselves, including seating and signage. Tarda approved the Pocket Park plans in 2023 and will cover roughly 307,000 of the cost, with the remainder being reimbursed in 2025 by Tarda. The Public Works moved to Wales Road. The final cost of the project is anticipated by the end of the week. Remodel of the current safety building to expand into former Public Works. Building updates are expected to be started this year. For the pedestrian hybrid beacons, a virtual walkthrough of the locations for the beacons was conducted, and the project is moving forward slated for 2025. The city is moving forward on paving City Lots 1, 2, and the alleyway connecting the lots behind the businesses on Superior. For the Indian Hills property, Chief Kitzler is researching possible camera or alarm systems for the building. He suggested installing no trespassing signs on the property as the building is unsafe and a potential hazard for trespassers. The bridge over I-75 is still expected to be completed by October 15. The meeting adjourned at 5:00 p.m.
Okay, any comments or questions on the Facilities Committee report? It looks like they're making great progress on the bridge. We just sent a picture from Todd Odette, so that should be pretty soon.
I have the other one.
Go ahead.
On the back, sorry. Okay. There was another Facilities Parks and Marina Committee meeting on Friday, October 11, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. In attendance was Allison Murray, Todd Kitzler, Kevin Heben, Chris Kirk, Neil McKinnon, Todd Odette, Rachel Tinney, Bob Toth, and Brenna Reynolds. The committee members inquired about the adjacent businesses and if the city was responsible for any potential improvements if they needed to be made. Mr. Odette surveyed the lot and expressed that he did not note any necessary current improvements and that the city would not be liable if they were found to be needed in the future. The meeting adjourned at 4:26 p.m.
Okay. Report of the Mayor and Administrator, Ms. Murray.
I have just a couple things, and then at the end of mine, I know Beth would like to speak first on the CVB. So the first item I have tonight is a special event permit request, and this is for Red's Irish Goodbye. And they wish to utilize the city lot here next to their building the night of the zombie crawl. I think they would like to have an outdoor bar and maybe perhaps food and a band in that area, and it would take place from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. in conjunction with the zombie crawl. So I just need an okay from council.
Go ahead, Chris.
Move to approve the request from Red's Irish Goodbye.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the special use permit for Red's Irish Goodbye, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item that I have is, I'm sure that everyone has seen these beautiful murals that is being done by the library. It's just gorgeous. And I know that it was just right behind the library, and now they've actually come out and expanded it into the parking lot. And so just to be on the record, to ensure that if we get council people in the future that may not have been here or understood this project, that they know that council approved of this project. If we could please have like a voice vote, that you are in approval of the project from the library, the library mural, because it is very well done and it's a nice addition.
And just so council knows, our code requires council approval of all murals. So that's why we're bringing in for you now.
Go ahead, Chris.
Move to approve the murals. I think they're beautiful.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the library mural project, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item I have is, there was a lot of talk on Facebook, I heard, about grants. And I would like to let everybody know that the fire department did put in for a safer grant this year. They were not awarded this year. I'm sure they will try again next year. I know they put in for it every year, but here are the projects that the city has been funded between the years 2020 and 2025, and you'll see it's just over $18 million. So we had the Lime City State Route 65 and Colony Road roundabout down here, and we got ODOT funding for 1.4 million on that one. We used our ARPA money for stormwater improvements. We needed to not only replace the stormwater structures on Windsor and now on Jennings, but we needed to make them bigger, because as you all know, there's a lot of water that lays around down in that area, and so in order to increase the capacity of water that could go into the stormwater system, we needed to have larger catch stations. So that's what we used our ARPA money on. We were awarded $60,000 from the Wood County Courts for pickleball courts down at Beach Street. We were awarded $32,000 for the kayak launch from ODNR. We were awarded $820,000 in the CARES grant, and that was for safety projects during COVID. And I know that the doorway out there leading down to the hallway in the city building was done with that. So was the annex. We had all kinds of protective equipment for everybody. We had everything that we needed to keep everybody safe and keep operations going in the city. We got $100,000 from the Wood County TID for a traffic study in the crossroads, and because that was successful, we turned around and got $500,000 from ODOT for a traffic access plan through the crossroads. We got $294,000 for a vets park concession stand from House Bill 481. We got $246,000 from the Marina, for ODNR, for the Marina pump station. We got 1.2 million for Buck and Glenwood intersection. We got 448,000 from TMA COG for the Bergen and Superior intersection. We'll get 487,000 from OPWC for the Bergen and Superior intersection. We got 120,000 to identify and map our stormwater system from FEMA. We got 1.4 million in a CMAG grant for the Lime City Road and 795 intersection improvements, which you can see they're just starting. We got 2.6 million for the Daimeling Road improvements, and that was an EDA grant that Rex and the Port Authority headed up. We got 297,000 coming from OPWC for the repairs that are going to be made next summer to Long-legged Bridge, and 7.5 million from ODOT because they replaced the bridge over I-75 when it was hit. And although they didn't give that to us in grant funds, they partnered with us because they moved that project up 10 or 15 years in order to accommodate that. So that really assisted the city of Rossford at that time. So about $18.1 million in grants that we have received. So we may not have gotten the safer this year, but hopefully we will get it in the future. And we are working on grants. We do put in for grants, and we have been receiving grants. So that was just an update we had on that. The next item that I have is, we have an issue with a failing culvert at Colony Court. It's this area right here, and if you look close enough, you can see the failures. We have been doing an evaluation of all of our streets in Rossford, and this one was identified as having some issues. So we had John Mustrick, the county engineer, along with most of the engineers in Northwest Ohio, it seemed like, out there last week. They are designing a plan, and I should have something in the form of an ordinance at the next council meeting, but this is something that we need to address right away so that we can get through the winter without any incidents back there. And that's all I have tonight, but then I would like to let Beth have a few words.
Real quick, Kevin, we didn't add executive session to the agenda.
I thought what we would do is after audience remarks, if council would consider a motion, then to go into executive session, we could.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, Beth. I'll come.
I just wanted to stop in and say thank you for everybody's support and the city's support for Stroll the Street. We had a great season this summer, wonderful music, wonderful food, of course, and we had the car show every month. And our newest thing, and I brought everybody a little of the box with the recipes, but we did the Eat Fresh program that was sponsored by Meyer. We had the traveling chef out there every week, using produce from Turks Farms to sample a new recipe every week, and then everybody got all the recipes as they collected them every week. That was a really fun activity. We had hundreds of people participate in that. It was really interesting to see what people had never tried before, like asparagus. So that was fun. I gave you all a special invitation to an event that we're having next week. It's an announcement, a press announcement, which I can't, there'll be a press release coming probably tomorrow. And then I also wanted to let you know that last week at the Ohio Travel Association's Ohio Conference on Travel, we were awarded the Citation of Excellence for Innovation in Travel Marketing for our mobile travel trailer unit. So we're really excited about that, and the board's like, well, how could we display that? So we're trying to figure that out. And then I just wanted to, you know, special thanks to Public Works for all their help this summer with not only Stroll the Street, but Celebrate on Clark, out at the hotels. They were great, so much help for us, and we appreciate the city's help with all that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Watchroom, any correspondence?
None, Mayor.
Okay, introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2024-62 by title only?
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-62 is an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the Rossford Park at Park Project and declaring an emergency. This is a third reading.
Allison.
Yes.
Did you talk to Mr. Heben?
I did, yes, and I talked to Mr. Huffman on the way in, and that the agreement is no problem.
Okay. I asked for an agreement just regarding the law that they mentioned in the committee meeting minutes that the city would not be liable, and I just wanted to have that in writing, because I've been arguing with contractors all week. So it's kind of forefront on my agenda. So with having the agreement, I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2024-62. Echol.
Aye.
Tinney.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
No.
Obendorf.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2024-63 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-63 is an ordinance authorizing the extension of the agreement with the Rossford Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring an emergency. This is a third reading.
Caroline.
The CVB met last week, and we are working through the details, and they asked that this get tabled, and hopefully we have a revamped agreement by the first of the year. So the contract would now go January, start in January.
Okay.
Do we have to do anything to extend the existing contract, or is it?
It automatically extends.
Go ahead, Mr. Heben.
I'll motion to table Ordinance 2024-63 indefinitely.
Second.
All those in favor, I'll probably have to go one by one. Vote on the motion to table Ordinance 2024-63 for a time period to be indefinite. How's my coat knocking that off? Heben?
Excuse me, aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2024-65 by title only? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-65 is an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Rossford Municipal Code and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Move suspension of the second and third readings.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is there a, you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Audience.
Okay. Any one of the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2024-65. Echol?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2024-66 by title only? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-66 is an ordinance authorizing the administration to enter into an agreement with Tetra Tech, acting in their capacity as Rossford City Engineer for engineering services required in conjunction with the construction management and project inspection for the Jennings Road Reconstruction Project and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison.
This is for the construction management on Jennings. They did similar for Windsor. They're out there every day. If there's problems, if there's issues, if residents have questions, they address it. They do a really good job.
I'll move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare Ordinance 2024-66 an emergency measure.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2024-66. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to declare Ordinance 2024-67 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-67 is an ordinance approving plat 5 of the Ironwood subdivision and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Last week at the City Planning Commission, they passed this. This is Ironwood's plat 5. If you haven't been out to Ironwood, you can drive all the way around now because they are developing the remaining lots out in Ironwood, which is really good news for the city because we have limited spaces.
How many lots is that adding?
Twelve, is it 12?
Yeah, I think they're about all sold.
Yeah, I know that people are happy them, so. So now it comes to council for approval.
Motion to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Any one of the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2024-67. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2024-68 by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-68 is an ordinance authorizing the administration to dispose of certain surplus property not needed for any municipal purpose and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison.
This is a request from the fire department, two surplus items that they no longer use.
Motion to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Any one of the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare 2024-68 an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2024-68. Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2024-69 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-69 is an ordinance authorizing the amendment of the zoning map of the city of Rossford and adopting a new zoning map of the city of Rossford. This is a first reading.
Allison.
This property at 1014 Dixie Highway, you're probably all familiar with it. It's across from the old former Rust building that burnt down. It has existed all of this time in R1 medium-density single-family. However, there are rentals at the back of it that I think one's an office, and I think they want to move the other one to perhaps a duplex-type situation. So it passed through the planning commission last week to move it from R1B medium-density single-family to C3 core commercial.
Motion to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there any one of the audience that has any comments or questions in regards to this? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt 2024-69.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Ordinance 2024-70 by title only?
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-70 is an ordinance amending supplemental number 15, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024, passed by Ordinance 2023-73. This is a first reading.
Allison.
I'm going to defer to Chris.
Chris?
Thank you. So there are a handful of things that we are adding to the budget here tonight. The first item is a lightened siren outfit for the detective vehicle for the Rossford Police Department. After speaking with Chief Kitzler, this will be a needed upgrade for the detective vehicle, and it is being paid out of forfeited funds, so it would not be coming from the general fund. The next two items are related to our second half real estate settlement. So the first item are just simply accounting fees that are levied by the county, and the second item are TIF funds that, per the agreement, should be distributed to the high school, PENA, and the developer. So those funds we would be adding to the budget. The next two items are drainage improvements. One drainage improvement at the alley between Bergen and City Lot 1, and the second drainage improvement would be to the alley at City Lot 2. And the last item is an insurance dispersment. So there was property damage at 232 Elm Street last year. The city received and has been holding the insurance funds related to that. I've been notified the nuisance has been abated, so I'd like to release those back to the homeowner. That's all I have.
Wave second. Make a motion to wave second and third reading.
Second.
Is there any one of the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Ordinance 2024-70. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Introduction of resolutions. Is there a motion to read Resolution 2024-23 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-23 is a resolution to approve the Wood County Final Plan for Implementing and Operating Countywide 911 System. This is a first reading.
Allison.
I'm going to defer to Chief Kitzler.
Thank you, Allison, Mr. Mayor. So in October of '23, the state passed the law. It's the higher revised code, 128.03, requires all political subdivisions in Ohio to become part of a county-wide 911 system. Wood County has developed that plan. We really don't have any changes because we use Wood County dispatching to control our 911. Cities like Perrysburg, Northwood, they have their own 911 system. They just have to abide by all the higher revised code and participate in that. So we agree with it.
Okay.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Does any one of the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We don't need an emergency on this. Move adoption?
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Resolution 2024-23. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read Resolution 2024-24 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2024-24 is a resolution submitting a vote to fill a vacant board seat on the Northwestern Water and Sewer District. There was only one candidate, so.
Has he ever come to a meeting?
What's that?
No.
Is the candidate currently on the board?
Yes.
Has he ever been here?
I don't remember.
Mark Schaeffer? He had said in his letter that I read to you guys a few meetings ago that he was going to try to get here, but.
Only have one candidate, so.
I know. I know, we don't really have a choice, but.
First reading?
First reading, sure.
The vote needs to be in by October, the, before our next meeting.
So, motion to suspend with the second and third reading?
Second.
Is there any one of the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption?
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Resolution 2024-24. Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
No.
Obadorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Okay, council remarks. Councilman Toth?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilman Obadorf?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Echol?
This is the important question. Are we going to have a float for the parade?
Yes.
And do we know lineup times or anything yet?
I don't, but I can get that out to you guys.
Okay.
All right, cool. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Tinney?
No.
Councilman Owen?
After my very interesting morning, medical emergency with my family, I have a big thank you to interim chief Basick and his team for helping my daughter through a trying time, so appreciate that.
Councilman Heben?
I just want to say that I attended a portion of that Ohio Travelers Conference with Beth, and she really represented Rossford well, so thank you, Beth. That's all I have.
Councilman Reynolds?
Nothing from me.
Okay, audience remarks.
Diane Wolf, 264 Jennings Road. I noticed when you were going through the grant money that's been received, $246,000 for a pump station that doesn't have a long enough cord to be operating. So those of us that, I can say now we don't have a boat at Rossford Marina because it's